Hi, I'm Jeremy Crosby.
And I'm Nick Boucher. We're your hosts for the program that's all about your city, Talking Pittsburgh.
Every weekday, we pull together the news, events, and information you need to stay on top of what's happening in the city of Pittsburgh.
Find Talking Pittsburgh on cable TV, Roku, Amazon Fire, Apple TV, and our live stream on the web. Plus, you can find all our headlines and stories on Facebook, YouTube, and our video on-demand service. This is your city.
Keep up with Talking Pittsburgh and the issues affecting you and your neighbors.
Want to know what's happening in your city? Get notify me messages from the city of Pittsburgh. Visit fitchburgwi.gov on your computer or mobile device and select the big notify me button on the left. Enter your email and/or phone number, whichever is best for you to get notifications. Scroll down the list and select all the topics you're interested in to receive email or text messages about. You'll be notified every time one of your topics is updated. Sign up for notify me. One more way to keep up with your Pittsburgh government.
Good evening, everyone. Buenas noches to the Pittsburgh Common Council meeting for April 22, 2025. The first thing is to call to the order to the meeting. Please stand up for the place of allegiance. Thank you. So next, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Ratafrada.
Here.
Alder Dancer Jr.
Here.
Alder Gerhert.
Here.
Alder Herps.
Here.
Alder Jetzer.
Here.
Alder Ladasey.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Alder Reigstad.
Here.
Alder Vafadari.
Here.
You do have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. So next, we move to item five, public appearances for non-agenda items and new appointments. So first, we have a couple of mayoral proclamations. So we are going to start with the first one is recognizing April 26, 2025 as the official Arbor Day celebration.
So recognize April 26, 2025 as the official Fitchburg Arbor Day celebration, whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day called Arbor Day be set aside for planting trees and...
Whereas the holiday called Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world and...
Whereas each year on the last Friday in April, people throughout Wisconsin and across the country celebrate Arbor Day by recognizing the wonderful treasure that trees represent and by dedicating themselves to planting trees and maintaining urban and rural forests and...
Whereas the city of Pittsburgh has planted and maintains over 14,500 trees, continues to plant hundreds of trees every year to reach 30% tree canopy in the urban service area, and works to protect existing trees wherever possible and...
Whereas in December of 1998, Fitchburg City Council acknowledged the importance of trees by resolving to develop a tree, a community tree management program with a goal of achieving Tree City USA status and...
Whereas trees can reduce storm water runoff, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, calm traffic, are a source of beauty and spiritual renewal, and provide a habitat for wildlife and...
Whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community and...
Whereas Fitchburg has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for 27 consecutive years, has earned 12 growth awards, and desires to continue its tree-planting ways and...
Whereas planting trees by Fitchburg's citizens represents a commitment towards community, environment, urban forestry, and aesthetic beauty.
Now therefore be it proclaimed by the city of Fitchburg that April 26, 2025 is officially known as Fitchburg Arbor Day celebration.
Now therefore be it further proclaimed by the city of Fitchburg that all citizens are urged to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and support our city's urban forestry program. That all citizens are urged to plant trees to promote the well-being of the present and future generation so that the future generation can continue to enjoy a green and healthy community and to look back upon the foresight and dedication of the predecessors with pride and with gratitude, and to join with others across our state and nation in celebrating the nobility of a tree. This is proclaimed this 22nd date of April, 2025. So, okay, so now we're going to take a picture and we invite the people from the three committees. Okay, so the next proclamation is declaring the fourth Saturday of April as Celebrate Trails Day.
Declaring the fourth Sunday of April as Celebrate Trails Day, whereas on the fourth Saturday of April, the city of Fitchburg and Rails to Trails Conservancy invite residents of Fitchburg to join Celebrate Trails Day, annual springtime celebration of America's trails and...
Whereas the city of Fitchburg is a six-mile, a six-square-mile city of about 35,000 residents designated as a Silver Level Bicycle Friendly Community in 2015 and committed to biking and walking as described in its bicycle and pedestrian plan adopted in 2017 and...
Whereas Rails to Trails Conservancy, which is the largest trail-walking and biking advocacy organization in the United States, is the national organizer of Celebrate Trails Day and...
Whereas Celebrate Trails Day is an opportunity to showcase the many ways that trails and connected trail networks bring joy and impact to people's lives and...
Whereas the Friends of the Badger State and Sugar River State Trails will host trail cleanup events beginning at 9:00 a.m. on Celebrate Trails Day along the Badger State Trail and...
Whereas Fitchburg Incorporated, Fitchburg's local advocacy organization for biking and walking, will operate a recreation station from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on Celebrate Trails Day at the Velo Underground, the confluence of the Southwest and Cannonball Pass and the Badger, Military Ridge, and Capital City State Trails and...
Whereas Fitchburg hosts portions of these three state trails and more than 50 miles of multi-use paths collectively, the Fitchburg Greenway system for people to use and...
Whereas trails, especially when connected, provide ways to access the outdoors and safely get around the community by foot, bike, and mobility device.
So now therefore, on behalf of the common council of the city of Fitchburg and in partnership with the Rails to Trail Conservancy, I, Julia Ratafrada, Mayor, hereby proclaim the fourth Saturday of April, April 26, 2025, as Celebrate Trails Day in Fitchburg and urge all the residents to take advantage of our world-class path and trail system for walking, biking, and rolling. This is proclaimed this 22nd of April of 2025. Okay, so now we have a picture with...
Everybody together, real close. Put your shoulders behind everybody else. Just...
So, I'm Steve Arnold, and I'm representing Bike Fitchburg. And first of all, thank you for this proclamation, Mayor. We want to express our gratitude to the National Rails to Trails Conservancy for, again, organizing this. This is the third year Bike Fitchburg has participated. We'll be having a little party, which we call a recreation station, down at the Velo Underground, which is, as the proclamation states, where all of our state and regional trails come together. And we'll be giving out drinks and information, maps, snacks. So we hope that you will come by between 10:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. And I'll hand it over to Christine to talk about her event.
Thank you. And yes, thank you very much for the proclamation. So I'm Christine Bell. I'm with the Friends of the Badger and Sugar River State Trails on the secretary. And I'd say for about 10 years or so, we've been planning and organizing a trail cleanup close to Earth Day. And so this year, it is the 26th. We partner with schools and other volunteer organizations throughout, you know, that along the trails. And one of our stops, one of our meeting places this year will be at Purcell Road in Fitchburg. So we will have a board member there to meet people, provide garbage bags, and help to help with the cleanup and sort of help promote the trails. We also will be along both Sugar River and Badger State Trails starting at 9:00 a.m. on Saturday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
No, thank you. See you.
We'll see you next meeting.
Okay, so next, we are moving to 5B. This is mayoral appointment and reappointment. We are going to start with the new appointment. So I want to say thank you, all of you, that most of you are here online. I want to be calling you one by one, okay, to the microphone so you can introduce yourself and tell us, the council, why you want to be in this committee. No, I want to do that. Okay, so I want to call Fred Brando Haas for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission, and his term will expire April 18, 2028.
Good evening, council. My name is Brandon Haas. I am a lifelong Fitchburg resident and recent District 3 homeowner. Excited to be here tonight, seeking approval of my appointment to the Bike and Pedestrian Commission. From growing up in the city, I know firsthand just how valuable our bike and pedestrian infrastructure is. It connects us to our neighbors, to our world-class park system, to our civic campus here, along with shops, restaurants, our workplaces, all making us a more united community. As the mayor and I were discussing opportunities for myself to get involved, I was especially compelled by the Bike and Pedestrian Commission. I think that we're in an era where world-class, or excuse me, local transportation is so focused on cars and how we get around. I think that this commission has the ability to inspire and educate our residents to consider alternative modes of transport. I think in this role, I aim to advocate for sustainability and safety and inclusivity in all of our projects and policies. And I envision Fitchburg continuing to be that model city where everyone can move seamlessly and enjoy that really high quality of life. So I really encourage or appreciate your consideration of this appointment, and I'll look forward to bringing my energy and ideas to this commission. And yeah, just thank you for all being here. So thank you.
Thank you, Brando. Any question, comment?
I'll move approval of Brandon Haas to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee.
Second.
Second.
Good couple.
Okay, all those in favor of the appointment of Brando Haas to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission, say aye.
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 And you oppose, the motion carries. Thank you. Now, welcome. So next is Amanda Canessa for the Board of Review. First, alternative term expired April 18, 2028. Hi, Amanda.
Good evening. I'm Amanda Canessa. I have been a Fitchburg resident for about six years. I work currently Dane County Corporation Council and am an attorney for the county there. I became interested in doing something to give back to the community and in speaking with Mayor Ratafrada, discovered that the board could use some support from somebody who has some legal background. And as attorneys sometimes do, I actually find the thought of looking over statute and having discussions with other attorneys sometimes fun. So I would appreciate your consideration for this role today.
Thank you. Any questions? No? Okay.
I'll move approval of Amanda to the Board of Review.
Second.
All those in favor of Amanda Canessa for the Board of Review, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose?
Motion carries.
Thank you, and welcome. Next is Charles Brown for the Commission of Aging Well. His term will expire on April 21, 2026 due to a shortened term due to resignation. Hi, Charles.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. I just want to thank Mayor Julia for considering my appointment to the commission and want to thank Janice Hughes for encouraging me to serve. I am Charles Brown. I have lived in Fitchburg. My family moved here in 1992. And I'm a retired faculty emeritus at Madison Area Technical College, where I taught adult basic education for 46 years. You know, all my life, I've been an advocate for something, someone, some group. I'm not a politician, not a politician, but I am a community servant and community activist, is how I would describe it. So my goal is to listen, learn, and ask lots of questions. And I look forward to making some contribution to this commission on how I may be able to advocate for the aging population. As I'm now 73 years old, so I do have some interest in that. And I hope that I can set an example for aging well. I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Okay, any question, comment?
So thank you, thank you for serving. I was the alder representative on Aging Well for a couple of years, and I appreciate the hard work they do and how hard the board, the hard work they put in to advocate for seniors. So thank you for serving.
Oh, I'm the, I'm the current representative on Aging Well, so I know Mr. Brown pretty well. Other than being in the wrong fraternity, he's a good guy. But welcome to the, to the commission.
He's the red and white, and I'm the purple and gold. Thank you.
Okay, I need, one second. I need a motion.
I'll move approval of Charles to the Commission on Aging Well.
Second.
All those in favor of approving Charles Brown to the Commission of Aging Well, say aye.
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 And you oppose, the motion carries. Thank you. I will say for the people that are being appointed, don't leave so we can take a picture after, okay? You are okay. So next is Jake Lepper from the EMS Commission. His term will expire on April 2021, 2026 because it's shortened term due to a resignation. Okay?
Hello, thank you for having me here this evening. My name is Jake Lepper. I am a recent Fitchburg resident. My husband and I bought a house here just about two years ago. So we are thankful to be, hopefully, lifelong members of this city moving forward. I have been a police officer and then now sergeant for the University of Wisconsin for about nine years now. I've also have volunteered as a advanced TMT for the city of Stoughton for three years and served in the Wisconsin Army National Guard. I want to be on the EMS mission because I think it's one of the most important services that the city can provide for its residents. And we have a new two-month-old daughter at home, and I would like to make sure that her and all the residents of the city are protected by the best EMS staff that we can provide. So thank you for the consideration.
Thank you. Any question, comment?
I just wanted to, as the new alder on EMS, welcome you and as a mother who called the EMS when her son was two months old, I really appreciate and resonate with that. And I'm super excited for you to bring your experience and your background to this commission. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I need a motion.
I'll move approval of Jake to the EMS Commission.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor of approving Jake Lepper for the EMS Commission, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And welcome. Next, we have online, Michelle Bozeman. She's for the Housing Advisory Committee. Her term will expire on April 18, 2028. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Hi, I'm Mayor Julia.
Hi.
First of all, thank you for this opportunity and this consideration. My name is Michelle Bozeman. I am a resident of Fitchburg roughly about 14-ish years. Still a renter right now, but in the process of looking to be a homeowner. I have to get a shout-out to Joe Maldonado because for years, he's always told me about coming in because of the public servant that I am. So just to give you a background on me, not only have I been into the housing area for probably 15-plus years from the corporate side, I've also been into economic development. I have been a voice for my community. And when I say my community, I mean the South Side and Fitchburg and the Monona areas. However, South Side has always been my area. I have been a volunteer to a lot of these nonprofit organizations from, of course, I have a tenure at the Urban League from doing a lot of connections there. But from Boys and Girls Club, so I used to be a board member of the Black Chamber of Commerce. I do a lot with the Latino Chamber of Commerce, volunteers with Urban Triage. I do a lot with Foster. I can go on and on and on. So when I say I'm grounded in this South Side area, I'm really grounded. One of the main reasons that I really want to join not just this committee, but I do have my eyes in others too, is because I am what I call the jack-of-all-trades. So not only do I deal with housing, I deal with economic development, but I also deal with the discrepancies in these low areas, these low-income areas. And this is all the way down from, you know, understanding their voting rights, understanding their tenant rights, and a lot of different resources, from food resources and just anything, anything in a community. So I've always been, you know, that person in the pillar of our community who's always shared information from social media, from mouth-to-mouth, just, you know, and just conversations. So again, this has been my life. I can't say this is, you know, part of a job or anything. This is just my life. And I feel like me coming into, with Fitchburg and getting that opportunity, I think it would get a better feeling because, as a lot of people know, when we deal with the low-income and economic, you know, people who's dealing with economic disadvantages, they are not always easy to connect with different chambers and different governmental officials. So I always feel that I played that middle role so people could understand why, let's say, the city of Fitchburg is doing what they're doing versus the understanding of what the police is doing. So again, I always feel that I am a middle person to help with all of that. So there's my story.
Thank you, Michelle. We have one question, two questions.
Michelle, having that Bears poster in back makes your vote for us a little difficult here in Wisconsin.
Like, give me credit on who this is.
I loved Walter Payton, but I'm a Packer fan.
Thank you.
I'm from Illinois, you got my vote.
Thank you.
Michelle, I'm the, I'm Gabriella. I'm the alder rep to the Housing Advisory and housing. It's been a delight to have you on the committee. It sounds like you have a really diverse perspective and have come from... Economic development certainly is such an important piece. It's so connected to housing in a way that we don't always discuss, but it also, housing permeates everything in people's lives. So that diverse perspective is really important for housing. And we have a lot of really potential to do a lot with housing this year. We have a huge affordable housing fund. So really exciting conversations to be had, and we're really excited to have you, have you join. And with that, I'll move approval of Michelle.
Joe Maldonado.
Thank you.
Joe, do you want to speak?
Sorry, yes. Thank you, Michelle, for applying finally. And I wanted to also say that Michelle has a small business. She sells sweets. And if you want to, like, share your business name, because I forgot, I've just eaten a lot of your, the pastries that you've made over the years. So I think that adds a layer of experience to being on SITA.
It's called Sweets by Sweets. And because now that I work for Dane County, I kind of had to put my business on hold because I'm the economic development specialist for Dane County. So I kind of had to put that on hold, but that's still my dream to come through. So again, one of my appointments. I'll definitely come and bless you guys with a piece of cake.
Move approval of Michelle to the Housing Advisory Committee.
Second.
Okay, second by Joe Maldonado. All those in favor for approving Michelle Bozeman for the Housing Advisory Committee, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? The motion carries. Thank you, and welcome. So next...
Thank you, everyone.
So next is Emmanuel Munoz for the Healthy Neighborhoods Advisory Committee. His term will expire on April 18, 2028. Emmanuel, are you ready?
Yes. Yes, yes, just want to make sure. Yeah, my name is Emmanuel Munoz. I've been a teacher there for about five years. My wife and I own a home in the 3rd district. And I've, I work for the State of Wisconsin Investment Board, doing investment operations on there. And I, in my last company, I helped lead Latino Employee Resource Group. And we did a lot of work with Semper Sano, Latino Workforce Academy. And we did some work at Bruce Stevens, helping with the soccer team. I just feel like if I don't lend my voice, sometimes a lot of topics are kind of missed. And as being Fitchburg resident for a long time and seeing kind of the neighborhoods in North Mity, it's just kind of where I wanted to kind of lend my help to. What else can I really say? I'm in the Community Equity Committee, the IPOC Committee. And yeah, I'd be excited to get started to work.
Thank you. Any question, comment for him? Okay.
I'll move approval of Emmanuel to the Healthy Neighborhoods Advisory Committee.
Second.
All those in favor of approving Emmanuel Munoz for the Healthy Neighborhood Advisory Committee, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? The motion carries. Thank you, thank you, Emmanuel. Bienvenido. So next, I will call Kenneth Martin for the Library Board. His term will expire April 18, 2028.
Hello, thank you. I'm Kenneth Martin. I've been a resident of Fitchburg since 2006 when I moved back to Madison. I've been a member of the Friends of the Fitchburg Library Board, or Friends of the Fitchburg Library since that time, since 2006, and served on the Board of Friends of the Fitchburg Library since 2018, being elected to the role of president of the Friends of the Fitchburg Library in 2018, serving through that, serving at that position through my, end of my term, the end of 2024, term limited. I was asked by the library director, Wendy Ross, and to consider joining the library board. And that's why I'm here, to continue, hopefully, to continue to promote the values of the library and, and the idea of lifelong learning and opportunities for our families, young families in the neighborhoods in the area to enjoy the benefits and the values presented by the library.
Thank you, and thank you very much for all your hard work on the, with the Friends of the Library. You guys do a lot of work, fundraise a lot of money, and thank you very much. You guys do a lot of work, fundraise a lot of money, and thank you very much. Who has? Oh, Nicole?
I just wanted to echo the gratitude. Having two small children, I spend a lot of time at the library. And everyone working there is a consummate professional and very patient with my very loud children. So, thank you for all of the work that you've done and all of the people you've served with, because as the mayor said, it's very impressive what you've done.
It's a great facility.
I'll move approval of Kenneth to the Library Board.
Second.
All those in favor of Kenneth Martin to the Library Board, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome. So, next one is Jim Wheeler for the Police and Fire Commission. His term will expire on April 16, 2030. And Jim is traveling, isn't he?
I move approval.
Yeah?
Second.
I don't have any doubts.
So, we know Jim. We share 40 years with him, so. Okay. Who's second?
Okay.
All those in favor of appointing Jim Wheeler to the Police and Fire Commission, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. So, next, I will call in Ryan Hutter for the Resource Conservation Commission. His term will expire April 18, 2028.
Hi, my name is Ryan Hutter. I've been a resident of Fitchburg for around four years now. My wife and I moved here from renting in Madison, bought a house recently. So, like I said, been here around four years. For the last 10 years, I've worked in the Wisconsin State Budget Office. Part of that included a policy that was natural resources, environmental protection, that area. So, I have some familiarity with some of the chapters that are associated with the RCC. But I imagine that the reason that I would like to be on the RCC is more to do with involvement in local government. I've, my education background, everything I've done since school has all been in government, but I've never actually had the opportunity to participate in local government. And so, this would be that opportunity that I would like to take advantage of in this community that I believe is going to continue to grow. And resource conservation is going to be a major factor in that as we continue to try and grow over the next, you know, decade, two decades. And I have an intention of being here over those next decade or two decades with my wife. So, who's here in the audience as well?
So, thank you, Ryan. Any question, comment?
Bill? Yeah, I'm the Alder on RCC. Glad to have you aboard. And I look forward to doing Conservation of Resources with you.
Look forward to it as well.
Okay.
I'll move approval of Ryan to the RCC.
Second.
All those in favor of approving Ryan Hutter to the Resource Conservation Commission, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. So, next, I am calling Ariel Levine. I don't know how to pronounce it. I hope I am, you know, for the Transportation and Transit. And her term will expire on April 18, 2028.
Hello, I'm Ariel Levine. I have been a resident of Fitchburg for about two-and-a-half years now, currently a renter, but hoping to buy a home in the next year or so. I've been a civil engineer for about six years now. For the last three of that, I've worked at KAL Engineering here in Fitchburg. I work on the Parks, Trails, and Rec Team. So, I do a lot of shared use, bike path design, and also do some site design projects there. I was encouraged to join the committee by Kim Lobdell, who I believe was previously on the committee. So, I'm excited to get involved and use my engineering background to help make Fitchburg safer and more connected for bike and pedestrians. And I am also a very avid walker, so I spend a lot of my free time out walking. So, I'm excited to get involved. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any question, comment?
It'll be wonderful to have a civil engineer on the TTC. So, thank you so much for applying. It's going to be great to have you. I'll speak for me, myself and Bill, who are both in. Oh, and we had four members of the TTC from last year on this commission. I'm a dais right now.
Okay.
I'll move approval of Ariel to the TTC.
Second. All those in favor of approving Ariel Levine to the Transportation and Transit Committee, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, welcome. And next, the last one is Marguerite Hutter for Transportation and Transit. Her term will expire on April 18, 2028.
My name is Maggie Hutter. I've been in Fitchburg for about four years now. I was notified by a friend of mine that a couple openings are coming up on the TTC. And he said that the commission might benefit from somebody that's an avid pedestrian. I walk everywhere I can, not just as a means of exercise, but actually transit, running my errands. That way, my office, or my employer has an office building within walking distance of my house, so I can work within walking distance sometimes. And I know I personally benefit from having that ability. And I'd like to, as much as possible, have pedestrian advocacy considered as we're making transit and transportation decisions in Fitchburg.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, question? No?
Yeah, definitely could use that pedestrian perspective. That's amazing. I'll move approval of Maggie to the TTC.
Second.
All those in favor of approving Maggie Hutter to the Transportation and Transit Committee, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. So, thank you. And thank you, everyone, for your, you know, willingness to serve the commission and committees. You know, the city of Fitchburg is growing. And I think we need, I appreciate your expertise and knowledge and desire to participate. So, thank you. So, we're going to take a picture now with all of you.
You all know what to do. You've seen this before.
They can Photoshop us in, Michelle.
I agree.
Starting to film again. All right. Everybody smile, ready? Here we go.
Congratulations.
Okay, so next in the agenda is the, I need a motion to approve all the reappointments.
So moved.
Second. Any question, comments? All those in favor to reappoint all the people in the list, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, we are, the motion carries. Okay, so we have another, we have Patrick Cheney that he wishes to speak in, or make a comment in a non-agenda item.
The Kids Crossing Structure Project is not on your agenda yet, which gives each of you plenty of time to look at it. Last week, the day of the organizational meeting, I talked with a couple of people, one before the meeting, one after. And one of them asked me if I had even seen it, looked it over lately for my opinion. And I said, no, my daughters used to play there, but they're outgrown now. So, I took up the challenge. And after the meeting, I went over there and looked at the Kids Crossing. And I spent about a half an hour walking around through the whole thing and looking it over. And after doing that, I am thoroughly convinced that it should not be torn down and destroyed. It looks like it only needs some minor repairs. I won't go into any details because I think each of you should go and look at it yourself for a half an hour or so to see what you think of it and form your own opinions. This project was originally a CIP that required 50% required donations, which I see as unlikely and impractical. And I kind of think that maybe the mayor agreed with that, who then changed the CIP to be, I believe, all on property taxes. Maybe it's borrowing. I'm sure, I'll be corrected if that's inaccurate. And I don't remember the figure of what the total cost was. But that'll be coming along for something on there. And so, in the meantime, before this does come to the council for any kind of a vote on it, I would encourage each and every one of you to go over and look at it yourself and form your own opinion. I won't give you any details of what I saw. See what you find. And then, I would like to see, when this does come to any kind of a vote on that project, that everybody kind of, you know, show that you really did seriously go look at it for yourself, because if you haven't, like I have not, I didn't know exactly what I would find in there. But I, as I say, I found it only needing minor repairs really compared to so much structure that's in there. So, it would be very helpful if, as you had a vote, if you made it a roll-call vote, and each one of you all down the line would say, yes, I have been there for at least a half an hour and looked at it, and I'm voting whatever, yes or no, whatever you think, and prove that you really did look at it seriously. You might mention or look up what the cost is. I don't remember, but I think it was a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. For the new council members, I will tell you, this project has already started. It was approved by the council last year. So, we already started with the RFP. And we are signing some funding for, so an engineer to look over the project. But this project is already started. You can go, I live two blocks away from the park, so I can tell you that it's in very bad condition. And then, there is information in the last park commission meeting, you can see additional information about the last audit for that park. Okay, thank you, thank you, Patrick. So, next, we move to the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second. All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Madam Mayor, could I pull an item?
Yes, which one?
I wanted to pull out the minutes from the April 8th council meeting, just to correct the spelling of a name.
Okay, let's do that. Okay. All those in favor of the consent agenda except with the minutes, say aye.
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 And opposed, the motion carries. Okay, what is the issue with the minute?
Okay, so, on the first page of the draft minutes, under Item 4, Public Appearances for Non-Agenda, or, excuse me, for the public hearing on the vehicle registration fee, the second speaker, last name should be G-O-L-E-S-H, not O-S-H.
That's it?
That's all I've got.
Okay, well, okay. All those in favor.
Move approval with the change. Move approval with the change.
Yeah.
Second.
Ah, you did it, okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes with the change, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. So, next, we move to Item 7, the Administrative Report.
Good evening, everyone. I'll start off by mentioning that there will be a public information meeting on Monday evening at 6:00 p.m., Monday, April 28th, here in the council chambers. That public information will be on the 2025 Street Resurfacing Project that will be taking place at various locations throughout the city. Our Public Works Engineering Team will be leading that public information meeting. And the map of the streets that will be resurfaced this year is located on the city's website. There also will be a public information meeting that is scheduled on the north-south Bus Rapid Transit Line. There are a number of those that have been scheduled. You can reach or notice those locations, dates and times on the Madison Metro website. There is one that has been scheduled in the city of Fitchburg for Thursday, May 15th, from 4:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. here at City Hall. May 17th, I know this is after the next Common Council Meeting, but it is a rather large event that I wanted to get on our community's radar, so to speak. May 17th is the Kids Building Wisconsin event at McKee Farms Park. That has probably become the largest event in the city of Fitchburg with upwards of 10,000 attendees at that particular event. We will have some city staff who will have a booth there, namely our fire department and our building inspection department. And then, of course, there are all kinds of fun things to do for kids as it relates to construction vehicles and so forth. The City Engineering Department and Public Works Department will be completing the remainder of the 2024 sidewalk replacements. Cold weather last fall did not allow the contractor to get those completed, so they will begin completing that work, and they anticipate it'll be done by the end of May. I've been working with the mayor and the finance director on the CIP. We held some meetings this week with department heads, and mayor, you'll probably maybe comment a bit more on that during your report. And then, the last two items I have, committee, commissions, and boards shall appoint by majority of vote a chair at their next meeting in May or the first meeting after May. So, if you are a representative on one of those many committees, commissions, or boards, I'll be reaching out to our staff contacts for those particular committees, but we will look to have a chair appointed by a majority vote at each of those committees. That is done by ordinance in May of odd-numbered years. And then, finally, as a reminder, the start times for the Common Council Meetings will change, beginning with the May 13th Common Council Meeting. That was based on action taken by the Common Council at its last meeting. And moving forward, beginning with the May 13th meeting, the start time for Common Council will be 6:30 p.m. Staff will be putting out communications over the next couple of weeks, reminding our community of the change, and will do that in advance of the next two meetings in May. Any questions for me at all?
Any question for Chad? No?
Parks, Parks Commission requested the RFP for McKee Farms Park to be, the RFP be sent to the Parks members, to the committee members. And it hasn't been done. Could you see that we get that?
Yeah, is that for the design services?
Yes.
For the Kids Crossing?
That's correct, Chad, thanks.
Any comments, question? No? Okay. Thank you. And then, I move to the mayor report. So, I will start with, you know, my first listening session for the year is going to be April 24 at 6 o'clock in the fire station number three, so District 3. Also, Alders for the district are going to be part of the listening session, and Police Department, Senior Center, Public Works. So, we are going to provide an update and also listening to the resident of any concern or question that they have about the district. And then, the second one is already scheduled, is going to be for District 2, is going to be June 26 at 6 o'clock, the city on a hill. So, more information will come. So, I also attended last night with the Alder for the district to the Swan Creek Neighborhood Association Meeting. We went there also to answer some questions. Also, I want to thank you all the volunteer for, that they were part of the recycle event that happened last Saturday, no, two Saturdays ago. I want to mention about the CIP. We started with the process of the CIP last week. Practically, we spent like, I don't know, six, seven hours. The head of the department did the presentation, the first draft of the CIP to the mayor and to administration. And I want to tell you something, this doesn't look good. There is no new project, no new initiative. And then, because of the cost of some of the equipment and some of the projects have increased substantially, right now, I need to, I have, for the 2026 budget, I have to look at the CIP and remove almost a hundred, half a million dollar. So, we are going to have a couple of more meetings to determine how we're going to find the money, which. There is no new project, no new initiative, and then because of the cost of some of the equipment, and some of the projects have increased substantially, right now I need to, I have, for the 2026 budget, I have to look at the CIP and remove almost a hundred, half a million dollars. So we are going to have a couple of more meetings to determine how we're going to find the money, which projects are going to be delayed, or what projects are going to be removed. So I'm going to be talking to some of you, because some of you have some project that you put in previous year, you know, and I want to have a discussion to see what is the plan, but so far, without adding anything, so it's looking bad. So, yeah, so we are working on that. The other thing that I am doing this Monday is, you know, as you know, I am looking for an intern for the mayor's office, it's going to be an unpaid internship, it's going to be working with, you know, with credit. And so far, we got 11 candidate for the application, very good candidate, and I already did my shortlist, and I'm going to be interviewing five people on Monday. So that one is going to be great, because it's going to help me with some of my work research, that, you know, as you know, I have a full-time job, and sometime I need, you know, someone to help me. But I think it's a good experience for young people to get exposed to local government, because they are going to be the future of maintaining, you know, coming to work in local government. So I think this is a great opportunity that we are also providing to young people. Tomorrow, I'm going to be a panelist in Habitat for Humanity Forum, so representing the city to talk about housing. So, you know, thank you for the invitation, wish me luck. So, but this is great, we are doing a lot of good things, initiatives that are going to come forward to you about housing, and I think we should share with the rest. I also participate in the Pittsburgh Chamber Networking Event, I will, I will, especially for the new council member, you have the opportunity to participate in those chamber events, because it's another way to get to know the people that live in Pittsburgh and the businesses. One of the other things that we are planning to move forward during the summertime or at the end of the summer is some minor changes to the zoning code, that we are working with the administration and with the planning department. Last two weeks ago, I met with other mayors, and we also met with the Dane County Legislative Caucus, with some of our representatives in the legislature, to discuss about what are our needs as mayors and our municipality, and what are the things that they are planning to do at the Capitol, to cover some of our needs, and, you know, we talk about share revenue, and we talk about regional transportation system, we talk about sale tax, you know, all of those, all of those initiatives that maybe are coming in the, some of them are coming in the governor budget, and other ones are how they can, you know, initiate bills to support local government. We also, I met with, we continue meeting with the Pittsburgh History World, to see, to make some progress about what we're planning to do in the world, what else? And also, as you know, we have a new chief for the fire department, he will start working on at the end of May. He's coming from Colorado, bigger city, more, you know, different perspective, so. And then I want to congratulate Scott, who was honored with the producer of the month in the Wisconsin Community Media Monthly Newsletter. And also, I want to congratulate Deputy Chief Laja for his recent graduation for the session for the FBI National Academy. So it was an eight-weeks program, and he joined almost 250 law enforcement officials, represented 48 states and 24 countries that come to do this academy. It was a 10-week leadership course at the FBI Academy in Quantico, Virginia. So congratulation, Deputy Laja. So that's it, any question for me? No?
I think Scott needs to give a speech.
Yes. Okay, people, so I think we are, what is the number now? Eight? Nine, eight. We are starting with the commission and committee's report and plan commission.
I'll start with the resolutions. I'll move approval of resolution R-7725, approving certified survey map request by Mark Jones, agent for Jones Family Scione Farm Trust, to obtain certified survey map approval to create three lots, including two building lots, on property associated with 2244 South Scione Road.
Second.
Plan Commission did approve.
Ag and Rural Affairs also approved.
Okay, what is this?
This is actually something that had already passed, but they do expire, certified surveys expire after a year, so it needed to come back. They needed, they needed more time to work on a connection from the home to the water system, because they're connecting to city water. The only change was that we are no longer including an easement that was originally in the CS, because it's not required.
Okay, any question, comments? The anon, all those in favor of resolution R-7725, say aye.
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 And you pause, the motion carries. Thank you, next one.
I'll move approval of resolution R-7825, approving final plat request, FP 258925, by Tara Miller, agent for Encore Homes, Inc., to obtain final plat approval to replat the existing outlot into 12 buildable lots on property located off Suelo Road in Terre Véza.
Second.
Plan Commission approved, and this is, they're planning to build 12 units in six twin home structures. They said that they've done lots of townhomes, and people love the end units, so when you do a twin home, it's basically two end units put together, they think those are pretty desirable. They anticipate that the price point, they're trying to make it around $400,000, which is actually less than $450,000, which I think is the average around here. They also said they're going to make it solar and EV charger ready, meaning that the conduit is placed, but they're not going to actually add solar or EV chargers to keep the price point down, but it'll be super easy for the residents to include that if they want. That's all.
That's all? Okay. Any question, comment?
What does it mean when you say solar and EV charging ready, but not actually putting?
I think it's basically the electrical panels are upgraded, if anyone else knows exactly.
They just have like heavier duty lines that if you wanted to put in?
So if they want to, yeah, if they want to put it in, it's really easy to include it, because I think typically when people put those things on, they have to upgrade their electrical.
That's right.
Which is super expensive, and they wouldn't have to do that. They just have to pay for solar or EV charging.
Thank you for explaining that.
They might be installing the conduit also, so install conduit and you leave nylon tape in there, so when you decide to put it in, you can pull the wire through, you don't have to dig things back up again.
Yes, and I think that's specifically what they said, was conduit.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of resolution R-7825, say aye.
Aye.
And you pause, the motion carries. Next one.
I'll move approval of ordinance 2025008, zoning ordinance amendment approving rezone request, RZ 259025, by Paul Woodard, agent for the city of Pittsburgh, to rezon property from IS, Specialized Industrial, to BG, General Business, to allow for a municipal police services facility on property associated with 5550 Research Park Drive.
Okay. Did Plan Commission approve?
Second.
Plan Commission approved. We also did an ADR, and approved an ADR for this. So the rezon's pretty straightforward, it just has to change zoning in order for us to build the building.
Oh, yeah.
I can comment a little bit, well, actually, if there's any questions about the rezon, we can talk about it, I'll also talk about the ADR after we pass this.
Okay, so, do you want to mention anything about this? No? Any question about this?
Just one comment. It says that the building footprint has increased 2,884 square feet, but the usable square footage inside the building has increased by almost 10,000 square feet, so I guess they must have tightened up the design?
Yes, that's my understanding, but we can talk a little bit more about the ADR.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments, question? All those in favor of ordinance 2025008, say aye.
Aye.
And you pause, the motion carries. Thank you.
So we're done with the resolutions, but I have actually quite a lot of updates, because we did a lot of things that are not coming to council. So first, with the architectural design review for the Pittsburgh Police Station, the full plans are available in the packet. They are adding back about 9,600 square feet to the project because of cost, it actually ends up being less expensive than they anticipated, so they're adding back six parking stalls, adding six parking stalls in the underground parking, and the top floor is now going to basically match the footprint of the bottom floor. I believe that they're doing is they're moving the command offices somewhere else in the building, and then they're opening up space, which will just be future flex space for the future. And if anyone else knows and wants to correct me if I'm wrong, please jump in, I know Deanna's on. Other things, the, they are changing a metal band, the metal band at the top that was in the original design to masonry, in order to save costs. They also are going to kind of match the building materials to other municipal buildings in the area, so it'll kind of have some continuity. The public parking is really going to be just that parking that exists now on the right of way on Research Park. Mentioned the goal for lead silver, which we approved last year or last meeting for the design services for that. They expect that the solar panels can cover about 29% of the electrical use of the building. There will also be geothermal, and HVAC will be inside the building. They also mentioned that they're going to have, the insulation is basically going to go from the bottom floor all the way up to the top in one fell swoop, not like a break between the building, which can make it more energy efficient. There will be electric vehicle chargers inside the garage, and in the future, there can be more outside, but that's not going to be from the outset. And then, oh, there was a question about bird window markings, where now buildings have big swaths of windows, they put those little dots on them, so you don't get birds constantly dying, and they had not looked at that yet, but the committee asked them to look into putting that in. I'm pretty sure it's not that expensive.
What is it?
It's basically like when you have big swaths of windows, you basically put little dots all over it, and the birds can then see it, and they don't fly into it because they think it's the sky, because otherwise you get tons of dead birds, and it's very sad.
I have a question for you. So you mentioned that the, it is cheaper than anticipated to expand the square footage.
Yeah, I can hop in here. So about, it's probably been three to four months ago, maybe even six months ago, there was a conversation about, on one of the cost estimates, that it was coming in a bit less than expected, and there was an ability to add six parking stalls back into the project that had been removed, six underground parking stalls that had been removed because of budgetary concerns. What that then allowed is, for at the time, you know, for approximately, I think, $350,000, we could include a flex space, and I can kind of hover over my mouse, which would be right about in this area here of the building, that could be then enclosed, would have concrete floors, some lighting, and I think the exterior walls would be drywalled, but ultimately the space would just be open so that it would allow for future use of whatever need there may be whenever the police department grows. The command offices that Alder Gerhardt mentioned were extended from this area down to this area of the building. That was, I think, approximately 4,000 square feet that was gained for less than $400,000, which was going to be significantly less expensive than doing in addition later on in the life of the building, so it made sense to incorporate that. Obviously, now, the latest cost estimate isn't quite as favorable, they're working to get the cost estimate closer to the $40 million that's been authorized for this project, it is slightly over at this point in time, and obviously, there's some uncertainty with the ongoing tariff situation as to what, yeah, what the overall impact will be.
If we are already over budget, I am not, I do not have a positive outlook that with this nonsense of tariff trade wars, that that's going to bode well at all, so I just want to share my concern, especially as we heard from citizens last week, the intense concern for the amount that we're taxing constituents. I have, I just want to make sure we're really building that factor in. I really appreciate the thoughtfulness around, to your point, it's cheaper to expand it this way than to build it in the future, that's exactly the ingenuity that we want to see. So, great kudos to the architects for thinking that way. Unfortunately, they don't have control over the geopolitical things at play, so not a comment on them, a comment on like, I think we should be preparing for, but it sounds like they're trying to parse that back, is that?
Yeah, and as I mentioned, you know, these decisions were made before the issues, let me rephrase that, the situations occurring at the federal level, and this building was ultimately designed prior to those tariffs being, coming into play here. One of the advantages of adding that space back in there is it does obviously allow for more solar capacity on the building, and we do anticipate that there will be another cost estimate prepared prior to this going out for bid. It is planned to go out for bid in June, with the bids due either at the end of June or early July, and ultimately coming to council either at the meeting in July or one of the meetings in August. So we won't really know the true impact of what the tariff situation is until we actually get bids on this project. We'll only be dealing with estimates up until that point.
Okay. Anything else from Plan?
I have a lot more from Plan, sorry, there is a ton in that meeting. So we did a conditional use and an architectural design review for Edgewood College Athletic Fields, which is that space off of Lacy and Seminole Road, some of our, Lacy and Seminole Highway. There was a long discussion about this, it's going to be basically a full track and field facility with a soccer and lacrosse field inside, and throwing field separately, there's softball field, a baseball field, indoor golf and softball baseball hitting facility, and that's also going to serve as a building for the environmental sciences, and then they are planning to create a, you know, I guess rehabilitate a wetland, I don't know the right word for it, they're basically recreating what would have been a wetland, and then have that be part of their environmental sciences program. So it's a pretty cool, pretty interesting project, the time is 6:00 AM to 12:00 AM daily, really the typical time, be end by 10:00 PM, but it could extend later if, you know, tournaments or whatever. There are lights on there, so they're going to need a special use permit for that after our DUCUS Sky Ordinance passed. They expect that there will never be more than about 1,000 spectators, and we talked about their need to really plan for those, for those events when you have lots of cars potentially coming, they will coordinate with the city. Yeah, and there's not going to be a ton of trees on the property, there's going to be a lot of native vegetation, but they thought that the trees, for various reasons, were not going to work very well, so just something to note, not really contributing to our 30% tree canopy goal. Let's see. And the mayor did bring up, they are a nonprofit, obviously, organization, and she'd bring up the idea of them having a payment in lieu of taxes, which is pilot payments, it's basically when a not-for-profit organization pays a fee towards municipal services, even though they're not required to pay property taxes, and because they will obviously potentially be using our city services, it'd be nice for them to potentially take a look at making that payment. And then for parking, there are 385 total spaces on the property, but they still need that contingency for big events, so shuttling, et cetera. These are Edgewood College students facilities, so they will be, I assume, busing the students in from the campus, but they also want it to be open to the public as well for, you know, coming and enjoying the events. If there's no questions about that, I can keep going.
I have, sorry.
Yes.
I do have a question about, so watching a little bit back about that, it does seem, I guess, I think there was some discussion around the proximity of the lights to the South Stoner Prairie neighborhood. Can you talk about any flexibility with clearly making sure that there's not lights on past 10:00 PM, like shining into the light of a homeowner's house?
Yeah, I mean, essentially, their plan is to end it by 10:00 PM, but if there is a tournament and there's overtime, they're not going to turn off the lights.
For sure.
Yeah.
How closer the house, like, I have small kids, 10:00 PM is way too late to have bright lights outside my house. Now, that, like, the distance matters, right? If it's far away, and I know Edgewood's a great community partner, so can you just kind of talk about?
I can't, I can't say exactly how it's for, but it's basically kitty corner from that, like diagonally across the roundabout from the houses, and the wetland is closer to Seminole Highway, like, the wetland is basically a long Highway. Like, the wetland is basically along Seminole Highway, so the sports facilities are slightly farther away from the homes and from the solar array.
Okay, so we don't.
It's not, it's, there's quite a bit of distance, but there is housing nearby.
And their lighting will be designed in such a way that it is unlikely to be spilling over the property lines?
I think, that probably answers, I'm sorry, I'm such a visual person, that I cannot follow, but I think that answers my question of like, how do we make sure that there's not bright lights budding up to a private residence, essentially making that residence not really attractive?
And if they are going to begin construction anytime in the near future, they will be present before any sort of residential property is constructed immediately adjacent to them as well, being south of Lacy Road. So the South Stoner Prairie neighborhood is immediately to the west of that location, and we're still working through, obviously, the neighborhood plan there, and I can guess there probably won't be any development there for about another five years.
So that'll maybe, yeah, okay, that's a fair point. And it might accommodate that accordingly.
Right.
Great.
And folks, obviously, will recognize that if they are moving to that area, that there is already an athletic complex.
Right, it's kind of obvious, right?
Right.
You know, you're getting.
Yeah, yeah. And the other thing is, I mentioned at last common council meeting, and I'll remind folks again, there is a neighborhood information session on this athletic campus next week, April 30th, at 6:00 PM at the Hop House Brewing Company as well. So if anybody has any questions or want to get an update directly from the Edgewood folks, that is an opportunity to do that.
I would recommend the elders for the district to participate in the meeting.
I am out of town, but Mica is nicely attending for District Four.
Okay.
Thank you for the reminder.
Okay.
Moving on, we did a conditional use and an architectural design review for EcoStar silos, which is on the Placon business along McKee Road. They're adding five 60-foot-high silos, so they needed a special conditional use to do that, to hold PET pellets and recycled PET flakes, because they make plastic. It's all, it's a lot of recycled material. Kind of a cool place. I would like to tour in the near future. We also did an architectural design review on Harteng Fields, which is the Ned Hoyt project on Harteng area, Botanical Drive. Those big apartment buildings that we've been talking about, this one is a five-story, 210-unit, 199 parking spaces covered, 280 parking spaces total. Building is similar to the ones we've passed and we've looked at in the past. I asked them about construction. He said they will be shovel-ready by mid-year, but the plan will be determined probably by costs in the world because of tariffs. So that's TBD. We also did an ADR on the QuickTrip remodel. The QuickTrip off of McKee is just getting a slight exterior remodel for a kitchen expansion. We also did a pre-application for Seminole Lot 3, which is the South Seminole and Lacy Road apartment complex that the Newcom is bringing. They have changed some of the plans. It's somewhat similar nature in that it's 300 units, studio to three-bed, but they're going to be four-story buildings in a slightly different configuration, and there'll be amenities like a pool, fire pits, dog park, community room, et cetera. If you want to look at the details that is there, this is just a pre-application. It's not actually an approval. More will come back. And that is all. Thank you.
Wow, okay, thank you. It's good, it's good that all this thing happened in the city, you know? Okay. Okay, so next, we move to the Board of Public Works. Dave?
Move approval resolution R-17524 to purchase of pedestrian lights for Phase 1 and Platte, fourth addition to Terre Vessa. This was postponed from October 8th over concerns about dark light compliant lights.
Second.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance approved.
Okay. What is this?
I'll let, oh, it's just, you know, residential, residential lights, you know, that are required, and I'll let Tim take it from there.
Pedestrian scale lights are required per city ordinance in the T4 and T5 districts of the smart code. The Platte of fourth addition to Terre Vessa is located in a T4 district, which requires the pedestrian scale lighting. The city's specified pedestrian scale lights are sold direct by the manufacturer, Stress Crete Incorporated to the city. The agreement for subdivision improvements in the Platte of fourth addition to Terre Vessa requires the city to purchase the pedestrian scale lights for this Platte, and the subdivider to reimburse the city for these lights within 30 days of invoice. We're looking for council to approve the purchase of the pedestrian lights for Phase 1 in the Platte of fourth addition to Terre Vessa from Stress Crete Incorporated for $121,683.
Okay, who paid this? The city, or then we charge it to the developer?
Yep, the city purchases the lights so that we have the warranty.
Okay, okay.
And then we invoice the developer for the cost.
Sure, yeah, okay. Okay, any question, comment?
Did we end up choosing different lights? Because I know we talked about them not being dark sky compliant. Did we, or is this the same lights that we discussed the last time around?
So these are the same lights that we discussed last time around. They're 14-foot-tall globe-style lights. We reached out to the manufacturer to see if there were dark sky-compliant lights available in a globe style, and they, there are not. The, in order for it to be dark sky-compliant, the globe, glass globe, would have to be removed from it. And as part of these lights, there are shields so that the lights shine down, and then there's shields on the house side of each light bulb within the actual globe. So these are as close to dark sky-compliant as you can get without removing the actual glass globe from the fixture.
And these also match the existing fixtures within the neighborhood, which was a consideration, as well as trying to minimize the number of different street light styles we have within the city, because the city Public Works Department tries to maintain parts in the event replacements are needed and/or one is struck by a vehicle or those sorts of things.
So are we saying that these are not dark sky compliant?
Correct.
But I think this is something that we need to look in the future for every new development that's coming to the city. We need to require, we need to be more, you know.
How many lights do we, do we know? How many more lights we anticipate needing for Terre Vessa of the similar sort? This is like the last installment of these non-dark star compliant.
I think we are, is it fifth edition? There are five phases, isn't it?
Yeah, there are many left. Tim might have.
Yeah.
Yes, so this is for Phase 4, this is for Phase 1, and then there's a Phase 2 for fourth addition, and then there's a fifth addition, then that subdivision would be complete. So you're maybe looking at another, you know, 30 to 50 lights between the two, the Phase 2, and then the fifth addition.
Do the existing lights have the, are these exactly the same as the existing lights, or is that shielding within the globe new with this crop of lights?
No, the shielding is existing within Phase 1, or the first addition, second addition, and third addition. The shielding is on the light poles adjacent to the housing, so at the intersections, those globes don't have the shielding, just due to it illuminating the intersection. To date, we haven't received any issues with lighting complaints from any of the residents in Terre Vessa with these lights. You know, as I mentioned, that the shield on the house side has proved to be effective through the first three additions to this subdivision.
So I guess if we wanted to see for ourselves what the current, what these new lights are going to be like, we could go out there in the dark on any day and see what the current lights are.
Okay, any other question, comment? Okay, all those in favor of resolution R-175-24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Next one.
Move approval resolution R-4125, approving first amendment to license with T-Mobile Central for LLC, T-Mobile's LLC for communication equipment on Tower C. Board of Public Works approved.
Second, Finance approved.
Okay, what is this?
T-Mobile has antennas, communication equipment on our water tower C. We are, we are changing the agreement. They have asked us to, they're, we're extending them to 25 years. They're agreeing to a 25-year lease. We are agreeing to that. We've agreed to reduce the annual increase from 4% to 3%. This will come into play in 2029, and the current lease per year right now is $54,000 a year. As Tim would mention, they have been a very good tenant. They make minimal demands on us, and we believe this is prudent for the city.
Okay, question? No. Okay, all those in favor of resolution R-41-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next one.
Move approval resolution R-4725, approving relocation order for construction, Seine Interceptor Phase 2 extension. This was postponed from April 8th meeting.
Second.
Board of Public Works approved.
Finance approved.
Plan Commission?
Plan Commission approved.
Okay, so what is this?
So we need this order for the, for the extension across a private property to obtain an easement, both for the permanent installation and a wider 30-foot construction easement to extend the Seine Interceptor across this parcel. This enables us to start negotiating with the property owner to install this. We also looked at, David Hayth was concerned we were in the environmental corridor, and we, we had an overlay, Tim provided an overlay of showing where our pipe is going versus where the corridor is, and we are, we are, we are fine.
Okay, so in summary, we postponed from April 8th because we wanted to determine if the easement was not in the environmental corridor.
That's correct.
And it's like, we have a map, and the easement is not in the environmental corridor, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Part of the, part of the construction easement might touch it. Was that right, Tim?
Yes, the easement's actually within the buffer of the environmental corridor, which is allowed, you know, CARP C does allow utilities to be constructed within environmental corridors, and that the GIS map that we were looking at at the last meeting showed, you know, the previous installed interceptors throughout the city are located within the corridors. Madison Metropolitan Sewers District also has their infrastructure within the corridors. In order to get all the sewage to the plant, we have to construct it through these corridors, otherwise, we never get it to the plant. So it is allowed per rules to, for utilities to be constructed within these corridors.
Okay, any other question, comment? Nope.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I'll turn on my microphone first. Maybe, I don't know if it's Chad or Tim here. I believe it was at, I can't remember if it was Plan Commissioner or where, which meeting it was at, where we had heard that there'd been some attempts to reach this property owner, where this easement is being sought, but haven't successfully touched base with this person yet. Is that still the case, or have we heard a little bit more from, from the property owner whose land this is?
So we have notified the resident at this property, and a letter was sent several weeks ago. We still haven't heard. The next step would be to have the appraiser, you know, reach out, and, you know, we'll also have the easement state on the property so that the appraiser can then go meet and discuss, you know, if they can actually see the impacts on the land and where the markers are delineated. So that even though we haven't heard from them, we will be getting in touch with them to have that site visit and those discussions.
We need the, we need the resolution, though, to have the, have the negotiation. Yes, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of resolution R-47-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. Thank you. Next one.
Move approval, approval resolution R-5325, approving change order number three for 2024 street resurfacing project.
Second.
The Public Works approved.
Finance approved.
Okay, what is this?
You recall, we had a second change order with, you know, the, our, our, that we put on, dented here, and so we had to grind down deeper and add more asphalt, and our second change order did not cover all the additional asphalt, and also, we discovered we had a number of water valve boxes that we found were damaged or had to be repaired. There were nine of those. So this change order includes the additional, additional asphalt, and that money will come out of this year's street resurfacing, and then the water valve, that'll come out of our water utility budget to pay for this.
So.
Third change order, and this was on Seminole Highway, Nesbit, and Fitch Rona Road.
So the change order is almost $51,000?
That's correct, Madam America.
And why, I have a question. Why we have 2.4, no, $2.7 million in street resurfacing in for 2024? We have additional money there?
Yeah, the council had authorized some ARPA did closure money to be in there.
Ah, they are, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that went to the Healthy Neighborhoods area.
Oh, yeah, sure. Okay, yeah, yeah. Okay, so any question, comment?
One thing that we learned in finance, and Tim, please correct me if I'm wrong, but because they exceed, the asphalt exceeded the estimate, we are only required to pay 50% of, for the asphalt above the estimate, so we actually save on that additional. Obviously, we're paying more, but we don't, we're not paying full price for the asphalt.
Okay.
Correct. That is, anything over the maximum yield that the contractor puts on a road will only pay 50% of the bid price. So say it's $100 for a ton, and they put an extra ton down, we would only pay $50 for that, you know, because they went above and beyond our specification.
Got it. Interesting. Okay. This is required two-thirds of votes, so we are doing a recall.
Thank you, Mayor.
Roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Dancer Jr.?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herps?
Aye.
Alder Jutser?
Aye.
Alder Lotisay?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Agstead?
Aye.
Alder Vafadari?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Uh, next one.
Move approval resolution R-6725, approving change order number one for Fitch Rona Road and Goose Lake Stormwater Improvement Project.
Second.
Board of Public Works approved.
Finance approved.
Okay, what is this?
So with the, with the Goose Lake, Fitch Rona, we're going to be moving more stormwater into the Badger, Badger Mill Creek, and it was determined our stormwater model is maybe not as accurate as Madison's. That also feeds into the, basically, the start of Badger Mill Creek, so we are going to be paying Madison to do the model of the, of the stormwater, our stormwater from Fitch Rona Road and Goose Lake going into Badger Mill Creek. As you're aware, with Goose Lake, we're adding a larger outlet structure on there, so water, more water can move out of there and not back up onto Fitch Rona Road. So this is our, the way I understand, listening to Ben, maybe our model is a little outdated or whatever, and we're going to use the more accurate Madison model for this, for this study.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, questions? Okay, so all those in favor of resolution R-67-25, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Next one.
Move approval resolution R-7125, preliminary assessment resolution for 2025 sidewalk replacement.
Second.
Board of Public Works approved.
Finance approved.
Okay, what is this?
So it's setting forth our intent to assess, assess for replacement or improvement on, placement of sidewalk sections in Fitchburg next year. This is predominantly, I mean, the Orchard, the Orchard Hill Development, you know, around Targets and Limestone and Nesbit Road is where this is predominantly targeted. around Targets and Limestone and Nesbit Road is where this is predominantly targeted.
Okay, this is a replacement, so.
It is replacement. You are correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay, any comments, questions? Here none. All those in favor of resolution R-70-25, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Dave. So now we move to Parks Commission.
I think, nothing new since our last meeting in early April. But as you saw, we approved the reappointment of Sue and Chris back to the Parks Commission. Two valuable members. We're glad to have them continue to serve. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Library Board?
Yes, we met on April 16th. A couple updates here. The 2024 audit results came back with nothing of concern to report, something that the council should be aware of, that will be coming our way likely in the future. The fire panel is reaching the end of its life. So the library is likely going to be moving forward with a budget amendment to us in the council to get that replaced. I don't believe it can be repaired, given the state and the age of it. That's probably going to be $10,000 to $12,000. But the library should be able to use fund balance to help with that. There is a project going to start soon. It has not started as of today, to refresh the second-floor technology center. It's kind of structured like a computer lab. It's going to modernize it and make it a little bit more, you know, a little bit more friendly for users. All the new furniture was ordered before the tariffs kicked in, so a little bit of good news there. The computers at some point will need to get moved out of that room to allow for that work to get underway. Next year's capital improvement project for the library is updating the children's department. Something interesting that I learned is that we see a lot of our Fitchburg residents go to the Verona Library because the children's portion of the library in Verona is quite a draw, which when the Fitchburg residents go to Verona means that some of the dollars go to Verona as well. So even though we have a library, we're sending some money to Verona. So the goal of this is to make it so that this is a kind of more competitive and like a draw for our Fitchburg residents. And hopefully, you know, get it so that Verona residents are coming to Fitchburg instead of the other way around. The Friends are excited about the project. They will be working on some fundraising. So that was great to hear, that there will be some private money to help make that project a reality. And then the most pressing in terms of immediate needs here are just kind of a quick FYI. There are a couple folks on medical leave and vacation. So right now, there's some issues with staffing. As of the 16th, it had not been an issue where the library had to close unexpectedly. Staff have been picking up extra hours to kind of fill in the gaps. But there may be, you know, there's a non-zero chance that there could be a kind of a sudden closure. Usually, they're working a few days in advance, so it wouldn't be a, you know, we wake up on Tuesday morning and just have to not have the library open, of course, unless somebody gets sick. So with the medical leaves and the vacations, this is probably going to last another five-ish weeks before it would be kind of in the clear. The library says that it will notify folks by Facebook, the website, its email list, and post signs on the doors if and as there are any closures to report.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Logan? No? Okay. Commission, Agent Will?
Yes, so just a couple things. On Sunday, April 27th, we have the Pancake Breakfast at the Fitchburg Senior Center from 8:00 a.m. to noon. Definitely come by if you can. I believe mostly everybody appears like signed up to volunteer. No? No, okay. Well, if you haven't signed up to volunteer, then please sign up to volunteer. They can use the help. It's always a great event. And a lot of individuals come through and the pancakes are great. Also, on the Committee of Agent Will, we have been working on an outreach plan. And to date, we've been able to work on like an intro statement, a defined purpose for outreach, target audience, and a method to reach that audience. And basically, what that is about is just the Fitchburg Senior Center wants to do more outreach to the community and have individuals participate more in some of their programming and understand like some of the services that they have to offer and can participate in without individuals always having to be the ones to come to the center to get this type of information. We have organized a working crew for this committee where we've been working on this. And the next working meeting will be on Wednesday, April 30th, 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Thank you. Resource Conservation Commission?
We did not meet in the month of April, so our next meeting is going to be in May. But this Saturday, April 26th, 9:00, at Sunnyside Dog Park, as well as, I'm sorry, Dunn's Marsh, Trailhead, Quarry Hill, Park Shelter, and McKee and Yarmouth Greenway for the waterway cleanups.
Okay, thank you. Transportation and Transit Commission?
We met last on April 10th. There's plenty of folks. Did I jump the gun here?
No, it's fine.
We've got so many folks on here who could speak to this one. So I better make sure my notes are correct here. So we talked about the South Sayen Road project, which is underway. And as of yesterday, the work began on kind of the southern half of that project through Swan Creek and Uptown. There's a Bus Rapid Transit meeting on May 15th, which Chad mentioned before. Somebody, I won't say who, it was me, asked why the meeting was being held at City Hall in Fitchburg rather than on the BRT line. To staff's credit, they worked to find an location that was on the bus line. There was no suitable location available for that meeting on May 15th. We also went through the Vision Zero Resolution and made several amendments, which will work their way through the committees and back to TTC before heading to us next month. We also discussed plans to extend Route 65 and Route B to McKee Farms Park to kind of make that a transfer area. If you wanted to get from the B to City Hall, for example, you could then take the 65, if that were to be extended, up to kind of that McKee, Brendan, Triverton Pike circle. And that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Sida? Joe?
Our next meeting is going to be this Thursday.
Okay, thank you. Arruda La Feal Committee?
Yes, so we met on the 15th. And we actually had a resolution come before us. The only other thing to add, we had a really good spirited conversation around the pros and cons and how to word things regarding city water hookup versus private well drilling. I think Deanna might have the world's largest tolerance of patience for all of us. So much appreciation goes to her and the group. So I plan to catch my fellow alder, Micah, up on all of the riveting. It was actually a super interesting conversation. We talked about going under roads in order to connect to waterways and how you actually measure city water hookups. So very grateful for the different voices at that table. And we'll catch Micah up to speed on that.
Okay, thank you. EMS, okay. Oh, where is? Oh, Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission?
Yeah, I was going to share this in my alder report, but we did have a community walk that was spurred on by discussion in our April meeting about wanting to start doing that. So we partnered up with the Allied Dunn's Marsh Association. We did about an hour-long walk around Dunn's Marsh from the Boys and Girls Pub and then returning there. We had three alders. We had three members of Bike and Pedestrian Committee. And we also had a member of the Allied Dunn's Marsh Neighborhood Association. And we took pictures of structural things that may make the path more walkable on the boardwalk. So I did share that information with some of our staff. And I will also share with the Bike and Pedestrian Committee our next meeting. Oh, absolutely. Yep. And we will be having our next meeting in June.
Oh, June. Okay. Thank you. EMS, there was no meeting in April? Can you update the team on the?
Yeah, on the Intergovernmental Agreement, yeah. Alder Vafadari just sent you a link to when the meetings typically occur, and they did not have one this month. The mayor and I have continued our meetings with the city of Verona and the town of Verona regarding an update to the Intergovernmental Agreement. I think we're nearly there. We're pretty much in fine tuning some language with the legal representations of all of the respective municipalities. We're meeting again in early May. I think it was May 10th is the next meeting. And it is hoped that all of the respective boards and councils will get the updated IGA for action in the month of June.
For the new council member, if you don't know what we are doing, please reach out to Chad or me.
Chad, I will be sending you a link to my calendar so you could share all your knowledge. Thank you.
It won't take very long, but I'll be happy to take it up to China, yeah.
Healthy Neighborhood Committee, so I think they are meeting April 30th to discuss the grants, you know? Yes, April 30th?
April 30th at 5:30.
Sin Donal, you're going to be in the meeting. So they're going to be discussing the grants, you know, they have like a short list and, yeah, okay. And then it's going to come to council for approval. Okay, thank you. Okay, Housing Advisory Committee?
Housing Advisory met on April 14th last week. There was two presentations, one from Habitat for Humanity of Dane County by the COO Steve Henrichan, presented an overview of Habitat's work in the past and plans for the future. And also, there was a presentation by Green Pastures Living, Anne Michaels, the founder and executive director. This is basically, it's a senior, it's worth watching the presentation. She basically is trying to solve the problem of seniors that are wanting to stay in the same place, but they cannot find, cannot downsize into a home because nothing exists on the market. So trying to...
But they are senior with the...
Seniors, not super-low-income seniors, because low-income seniors, there's like rentals usually available for them. But seniors kind of in that 80% AMI and up often don't have anything in their price range or in the size that they're wanting. So the goal is to kind of take, be able to use the equity that they have in their current home and help build a very tiny community in a rural setting. So like say, like four, six, eight, 10 units in a rural setting that all these people would share together. It's really interesting and have not successfully made a development yet, but want to. And Fitchburg is obviously, Anne has a lot of connections to Fitchburg and thus has a lot of interest in making something happen in Fitchburg potentially. So both very interesting presentations. Highly recommend watching that.
Can you repeat the person who presented that?
Anne Michaels.
What is the name of the, because I look in the website, what is the name?
It's called Green Pastures Living.
Oh, living, okay.
And then there was also a report from the department. And the highlight for, I'll point out, is that the RFP process for the housing plan is underway. So that will be moving forward this year.
Okay, landmark Preservation Commission?
No report.
You know, you can have one meeting. We haven't had a report in four years. Yeah, so Tree Advisory Committee?
We meet again on May 8th.
Okay, okay.
Also, to add to that, too, just a reminder, we said it last council, but this Saturday, there is a tree planting in the Fitchburg Dog Park at 9:00 a.m., if you'd like to join. And then at 10:00 a.m., Hugo James Town, there will be tree planting there as well.
Okay, thank you. Ad Hoc Committee for Community and Equity Committee, yeah. Community and Equity Ad Hoc Committee.
Yep, our next meeting is on Tuesday, May 13th, 4:00 p.m. to 5:45. We were going to meet on April 29th, but we had to cancel that one due to low attendance. Individuals are traveling around that time. And then at this May 13th meeting, just trying to finalize the documents that we're putting together that before, they come before council and then also will go before the mayor first, then come before council to recognize this committee as a standing committee. So that's what we've been working on.
Thank you. So then we move to Standing Committees Report, Finance. Anything else that you want to add, Gabriela?
Just that the audit is wrapping up. That's all.
Okay, Personnel Committee?
No update at this time.
Public Safety and Human Services?
As Chad mentioned, Festatalia is May 31st, June 1st. The concerts on the McKee Farms Park, June 16th, 21st, July 21st, and August 18th. And we have the Agora Art Fair on August 16th. So a lot of activities coming up.
Thank you. Any unfinished business? No? Okay, so then we move to new business. Is that Direct Referral is a resolution R-76-25, designating the month of May 2025 as a Low-Mow May? Okay, I need a...
Second?
No, I cannot move it.
Move approval of resolution R-7625, designated the month of May 2025 as Low-Mow May.
Second. Okay, who is going to talk about this? RCC?
Okay, sure. Yeah, so this is an event that we've had in the city for the past several years. Originally, no-mow May, meaning you shouldn't mow your lawn at all during the month of May. People found out that that sometimes results in a jungle that is untamable. So we are going with Low-Mow May. So the idea behind this is that you want all of the flowering vegetation in your yard to be available for the pollinators that are coming out in spring and having a hard time finding food elsewhere. So that's really the goal. So if you, you know, if you see your neighbor with a green manicured lawn with a no-mow May sign and zero flowers, you could let them know, hey, the whole point is we need flowers with nectar for the insects. And you can sign up with the city. There's a form you can fill out. It's a bunch of checkboxes. And it's basically a reminder for all of the things that you should be thinking about while you're doing this. And you can also get a yard sign from the city and advertise to your neighbors that you're participating.
Okay, those flowers that they are with also qualify?
Dandelions? Yes, very good. You know, one thing that you might want to consider, too, is overseeding your lawn. Just throw a bunch of white clover. There's flowering thyme you can put on there or something called self-heal. Those are the big three that you'll read about if you Google for a no-mow lawn. So basically, these things grow to a relatively short height, and you'd never have to mow. You can walk over it and you're not going to kill them.
Good point. Okay, thank you. All those in favor of resolution R-76-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. So where we can pick up the sign? Can you tell us?
You can come to City Hall. The Planning and Zoning Department slash Sustainability Coordinator position is where we can get those.
Okay, thank you. So we move to Alder District. So we will start with District Four.
Okay. So just wanted to give a couple brief updates. Shout out for hands down the best event in Fitchburg, Kids Building, Wisconsin. So excited. It continues to stay in this fantastic city. Also, an event that I hope to kind of share with city staff. I'm kind of kicking myself for not getting it to city staff early enough this year. But I attended an event this morning called Culture Con, and it was focused on areas of state and public government, as well as higher education. And it was really focused around how to kind of make positive culture in areas of the public sector. And they have a specific breakout session for that because they acknowledge that public sector is so different. There's so much asked of city staff and state and federal staff with a lot fewer resources than is afforded to private businesses. So a lot of speeches on psychological safety and how that really improves outcomes for different groups. So I plan to share that out with Sarah and hopefully, next year, get her a pass to it. And then also, a quick... And then also a quick shout out, I will be attending the, the Chamber of Commerce. Mayor, I'm assuming you're not going to the Icebreaker tomorrow?
No, we're going.
You are going, okay, yay! Okay, so I get to bug Chad and you and Mr. Zimmerman, who I assume is going as well.
No Mike.
No Mike?
No Mike?
He's in Green Bay.
Oh, how dare he, I guess he can do other things, fine. So excited to attend the Icebreaker tomorrow. And then I'm going to give a, one of those alder shout-outs and reminders to everybody as the weather starts getting nicer and people start opening their windows, just a common request that everyone who is using gas-powered, very loud leaf blowers, that they purchase mufflers or some sort of stifling accoutrement, if you will, for the leaf blowers so we could enjoy our open windows in this beautiful weather and not hear very loud decibels all day long. So that's all from my part of District 4, thank you.
Particularly at 8:00 AM on Sunday mornings.
I mean, or just all day.
Okay, I will reiterate just a couple, this has already been said, but the, I will be at one or both of the tree plantings this Saturday at Sunnyside Dog Park and Jameson Hugo, right? And then the Edgewood College Information Session at Hop House on April 30th. I had one question about the trees being cut down along Oak Meadow Park, and so I just wanted to say that there are eight single-family homes being built along Oak Meadow Drive and then an additional three along Tarhee Trail, along with like associated stormwater improvements behind them, so that's just what's going on down there, so people know about it. And then just a couple of things, April 26th is Independent Bookstore Day, so go to a bookstore and buy some books. And I don't want to steal this, if you're going to say it, we went in reverse order. Is, is anyone, are you doing the Puppy Up Walk, anyone?
The what?
No? All right, perfect. So May 4th is the Puppy Up Walk, it's in McKee Farms Park. It is a two-mile dog walk, it raises money for canine cancer. My, I have been affected in my life by both human and dog cancer, so it's a great event and you can go take your dog for a walk, so check that out.
Interesting, okay. Thank you. Three.
So one thing, it's not necessarily a District 3 thing, but it is being hosted by the company of one of our esteemed colleagues up here, our Turning the Key to Home Ownership event tomorrow, so I'm going to try to be there. It is at the, the true stage, but I believe Habitat for Humanity is the host, so I'm going to try to do that. On Friday at Delta Beer Lab at, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, the UW Madison's Catalyst for Science Policy, Science Policy is having an outreach event at Delta Beer Lab. And then I'll turn it over to Logan, since this is his first meeting for the rest of the events upcoming on, in District 3.
All right, well, before we get to upcoming, let's flash back to over the weekend. I had the pleasure of taking part in the annual Swan Creek Neighborhood Waterway Cleanup. I've always wanted to, but it's always on the same weekend as my condo board's annual cleanup. Fortunately, that was a different weekend, so I was able to take part along with about 20 other folks. And the early number I heard was that we found at least 15 bags of trash between all of the waterways and along the sidewalks, so things are looking a little bit greener for a couple of different reasons in Swan Creek. As the mayor mentioned, she and Alder Dancler and I were able to take part in the Swan Creek HOA Annual Meeting on Monday at the fire station, answer a few questions from constituents, and we will be performing an encore performance for our District 3 listening session on Thursday at the fire station as well. And...
Do you want to see by?
Absolutely, we would love the company. And as has been mentioned already, the Arbor Day Tree Planting Event for District 3 is at Sunnyside Dog Park on Irish Lane from 9:00 to 11:00 AM on April 26th, and I'm hoping to attend that as well and get my hands dirty.
Thank you. District 2?
May is Mental Health Awareness Month and I'm going to work on a proclamation, so that's forthcoming. But Journey Mental Health has some interesting fundraisers coming up, one of which is taking place in Pittsburgh. Delta Beer Lab on May 6th is going to have a Drag Bingo fundraiser for Journey Mental Health, I'm going to try to stop by. And they have several other fundraisers that sound pretty interesting, so if you're looking to do something for Mental Health Month, those are there. Also in, Southdale has been one of my favorite places to go for recreation lately, I go to Greater Heights Climbing Gym at least once a week. They also just opened Crash Box Therapy, I believe it's open for appointments. It's a, I guess you can relieve stress by smashing things, so that's, that's in Southdale as well. And I think the ribbon cutting, the ribbon cutting's on May 21st, so it's a little bit away, far away, but it sounds like a fun place to go.
I believe it's going to be a ribbon smashing?
Yeah, how are they going to cut that ribbon? So anyway, go to Southdale, fun, fun times over in Pittsburgh, in that part of Pittsburgh. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, everybody's going to have to pay attention on Saturday because you have a busy day.
Yes.
Right, so you're going to be planting some trees, you're going to be cleaning up the waterways, and when you get from one event to the other, you're going to have to ride your bike through the Velo Under Round for Celebrate Trails Day. Maybe on your way down the Badger State Trail for the Sugar River and Badger State Cleanup Event. There's plenty to do. Reminder that it is now tick season. I myself pulled a tick out of myself and, so if you, if you do find a tick, make sure you, you know, pay attention to what it looks like, take a picture of it, save it. If it's a deer tick, be sure to call your doctor. I did that and I got some antibiotics that I picked up at Pittsburgh Family Pharmacy where I got a tour of their upcoming clinic. So this is going to be a pretty unique situation. They're going to have three clinic exam rooms attached to the pharmacy. So, and they'll be doing like direct primary care, kind of the same model as dedicated family care in Pittsburgh with Wendy Malaska, where you pay a monthly fee and then you can just go see the doctor whenever you need. But they will also do fee-for-service, which is going to allow them to take Medicaid patients. And so the, the big advantage there is that at any point, the pharmacist can be called in and confer with, you know, you're going to have the patient, the doctor, and the pharmacist all in the same room discussing what's best for the patient. There will also be a, a community room out at the, facing the, the front of the building, which they're going to have educational events there as, and it'll also be reservable by the public, so if you need to have a small meeting with, you know, five to 15 people, you'd be able to rent that space.
Okay. Thank you. Dave and then Joe?
On the 12th, 12th of April, we had our annual Bike, Bike Giveaway Event at New Fountains, you know, this, work with Bikes for, Bikes for Kids, Wisconsin, and I wanted to thank Bike Pittsburgh for coming. Mike, Mike Grady especially, setting up obstacle course, I may volunteer some Verona School District and my neighbors, the bike mechanics, gave away about 85 bicycles, which was, was very, it's the biggest, biggest event we've, we've had, so I was very happy about that. Saturday, last Saturday, we had our Allied's Drive, Allied Drive Dunn's Marsh Neighborhood Association Easter Egg Hunt, which is fun. I would tell you, it's amazing, you spend about, I don't know, half hour putting, you know, eggs out all over the park, you know, you just, I don't know how many, it's a lot. And you blow the whistle and the kids take off and like, in one minute they're picked up. It's like locusts going across, but it was a great, great event. Also last Saturday, the, the group that maintains and works on the mountain bike trail in Quarry Ridge Park had their workday, and just a, just a great group, I would encourage people to get involved with them. They, they have great plans for that down there and I think that might be all I had to report.
Okay, thank you. Joe?
Gave my update at the Bike Committee meeting. Also, I'll just say, this isn't a district thing, but I had the opportunity to go to DC for work, accompanied five youth in high school for the National Four-Age Conference, and there were kids from across the country presenting to federal agencies. There was actually one kid from Dane County who sits on the county board as a part of the Youth and Governance Program. And I'll just say that it really gave me a lot of, I would say, hope, for lack of a better word, seeing the engagement of young people in, you know, issues at a federal level and also obviously involved in their local communities. And it, it's just really important to note that the, the kids are watching and they're paying attention. So I, I was glad to have been a part of that and made me, you know, think about kind of the work we do here locally and how, how, you know, even when we have disagreements, even when there's tension, you know, in some of the work that we do, that having an engaged citizenry is incredibly important and opens up opportunities for dialogue, for greater understanding and for really ensuring that we know the things that we stand on when we make the decisions that we do. So I also want to, you know, give kudos to my fellow council members for their level of engagement, their level of detail. I know our last kind of big council meeting where we, you know, had to make, you know, some difficult votes was tough, but I, I'm really proud of the fellow council members for getting into the weeds as much, listening and also making offers to meet with our constituents, break things down, explain things. And I, I think this is a better state than, you know, just nobody paying attention at all and us just moving things through, so wanted to share my appreciation for you all.
Thank you, Joe.
And Mayor, one thing I wanted to add, the Pittsburgh Farmers Market starts next week. May 1st, Thursday, May 1st, 3:00 to 6:00 PM, it's every Thursday going through October, so go support our local farmers and vendors.
Yep, can I just say one thing, one last thing?
Yes, you can say one thing.
On Sunday, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, at 5303 Fennel Drive, the Wisconsin Second Congressional District Convention will be held. So again, that's just this Sunday from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, 5303 Fennel Drive, and it's the Wisconsin Second Congressional District Convention. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we are at the end and I, before we go to announcement, I had to make an announcement, someone that, a person that I know and has been very, was very involved in the city of Pittsburgh, Alice Jensen died two days ago. And Alice and her husband John have lived in Bryanwood for almost 30 years. She was a retired school teacher and was very involved in the Friends of the Pittsburgh Library in getting the library built in 2010. She was a president of the Pittsburgh Lions Club for almost 15 years and was an active member until she, her death. She also was instrumental in working with previous mayor in ensuring resident in the North Fish Hatchery Row, we are included as a part of our city. So this one is in remembering Alice Jensen, I had the opportunity to meet her 10 years ago, you know, and she was very involved in the community, so. Okay, so, so next our Committee of the Whole is? Tomorrow?
Committee of the Whole Meeting is tomorrow at 7:00 PM. Please add the fourth Wednesday of the month, which is always after our second council meeting of the month, to your calendars.
Not always.
Not, oh, thank you. It's the fourth Wednesday, so yes, I will usually remind you if it's, if it's not the, the normal Tuesday, Wednesday. It's late. Our agenda item is council orientation and onboarding, and I'm really excited for our administrator to show us the new council onboarding plan, so.
Just a handbook, the presentation might look familiar with some updates.
For some of us, it's going to be, we have been watching that presentation for 10 years.
Well, I would say that you probably weren't getting that presentation for the first several years.
Oh, yeah, true.
So, yeah, Valerie Zussman, the city attorney, and I will provide the annual onboarding for our common council. I'm sure you'll find it all very riveting, so, yeah.
And before I close is today we went to do a tour for, to the North Fish Hatchery Park, the hub. Adam, Chad, myself, you know, so I was impressed with all the, you know, how it's looking, it's look for outside, you're looking outside, it doesn't look like a big, but when you're inside, it's a nice, it doesn't look like a park shelter, it's more like a mini community center. So it's great, maybe, you know, maybe we can do a tour when, in a couple of months, invite you to, but this is, you know, this is great. So next common council meeting will be May 13th, remember that we are changing the hour at 6:30 and I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor to adjourn in the meeting, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, meeting is adjourned. Buenas noches, bye, Joe.